Part of those questions will be, somebody will say, oh, I have a follow up. So you'll have a series of questions. Please just relax and make like you know us.
Okay, uh, well, thank you everyone for being here and for inviting me to this. It's really, it is an honor. Uh, does everyone, does anyone need a copy of a resume or anything?
No, we're good.
I also brought some letters of reference.
Oh, okay.
Does just the board want them?
Well, I know that the, all of these individuals would be interested, so if you don't have enough, that's okay, you can share.
Is all right if I take notes of my book?
Absolutely. Okay, John will, John will start the questioning and as I said, I, I always lose my place because I talk too much. And so you, everybody else is like, no, it's your turn, okay? Don't, I'm just not, but focused. It's that I always have a question to ask in addition to.
Okay.
So, John, why don't you get started?
Sure. First, thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate you being here. Um, so first of all, just want to know, what have you done to prepare for the position of Fire Chief in the town of Barry? And what differentiates you from the other candidates?
Okay, uh, I've been preparing to be an upper level officer for a while now. I've been going to the Fire Academy, taking all sorts of, whether it's the safety class, sorry, uh, safety classes or get my certifications in incident safety, uh, Fire Officer One, Two, and Three. I'm also a Fire Prevention Officer, credentialed One and Two in the town. And I am a Fire Investigator One and Two with the state. Uh, I, so that is one of my things. Uh, I always try to attend meetings in town. Uh, I'm sure you've seen me. I was at Tammy's interview, like, whether it is I'm trying to put myself into the town as much as I can to know all aspects of going on. I watch the Select Board meetings, Finance Committee meetings. I just try to keep myself up on the, uh, what's going on in town, trying to keep the sense of the town. Uh, what would distinguish myself as a, uh, a candidate? Uh, I would, I'm pretty, I have, I have a lot of skills. Uh, I, I've worked on budgets, I've worked on grants, and then I've also been down at the station changing alternators or working on the trucks or working on the buildings. So I think in that way, I've done a little bit, I can do a little bit of everything, which helps keep costs down and budgets and things like that. Uh, I also think that while the, uh, the chief was away, I was the Acting Assistant Chief. So I've been in a role. I know the role wasn't Acting Chief, but I did a lot of his duties while he was away, whether it be presenting at a town meeting or a Finance Committee meetings or, uh, any Select Board meetings. Uh, I've, uh, I've done that, so.
Can you just highlight the grants that you may have worked on?
Uh, I believe I've worked on the SAFE grant. Uh, I believe, uh, I've worked on multiple SAFE grants, which, uh, for student fire, safety education. Uh, the, it's the Volunteer Fire Act grant, but for our wildfire stuff that we use our burning permit money to match that grant. So this year I wrote it and I, we needed some brush boots, so that's what, unfortunately, it's not a huge grant. Uh, anytime the chief worked on it, was working on a grant, I would review it and we would, uh, go back and forth and brainstorm on stuff. So.
Okay, thank you so much. I know it's my turn now.
Yes.
Okay. What challenges do you see facing the Barry Fire Department and the town in the upcoming year?
Uh, the challenge I see, or challenges, there's two big ones, I think. One is staffing. Uh, whether it be call, because we are primarily call department, per diem. Uh, we're having a harder time getting per diem staff. I'm not sure if that's because of the pay. Uh, I don't know if it's the facilities. I think it could be a little bit of everything. And also, we're busier. And other departments are getting busier, so there's a lot, and there's a lot less. Uh, I think firefighters, even to use firefighter paramedics out there. So it's hard, getting harder to staff. These members are getting overtime where they're going to make double out of a shift in, say, we have members from Holden that work, and they could pick up an overtime shift to make more money. Uh, and I think the time, the, to the hospital, I think that deters a lot of people, so that's one thing. The call side is tough. That's like a nationwide issue. Uh, and it's not just in fire service. I think it's in all aspects of like volunteerism. It's, and the volunteerism is obviously down in this country. Like, we had one person, uh, pull papers for, to be selected. It's a lot of work, but a fire, enough. Being a volunteer firefighter is a lot of work. You have a lot of training that goes into it and stuff, so. I think it's harder. People are busier, so I think it's.
Um, talk to me a little bit about the problems. What do, what do you see as potential solutions to any of those things? You talked about staffing challenges, you know, whether it be the facilities, whether you, the distance to medical facilities. Uh, how would you, how, if you were the chief, you would be responsible for giving the Select Board ideas about how to fix it?
Unfortunately, we can't fix the medical facilities.
No, we can't.
Well, we seem to be losing the smaller hospitals. Uh, they definitely keep trying to shut even more down. Like, Haywood, what, filed bankruptcy, I believe, not too long ago. I know, and like, it's further away, but like Clinton Hospital, that UMass keeps talking about shutting Clinton Hospital town. So fortunately, I think that's something that might actually become more of an issue for us. As the smaller hospitals, uh, close down. Uh, facilities, as we know, facilities are expensive. Uh, so I think the best way to work on that would be grants. And, but a problem with that is most grants, you have to be shovel ready.
Yeah.
So you have to have plans, you have to have land, you have to be ready to go. So until, like, we find a good location, maybe try to find a grant that get a set of plans. And the plans for a fire station are not cheap. And that, and then the other issue with building a fire station, that is, um, the town, uh, the state requires prevailing which drives the cost up exponentially. But I think we could, there's some things we could do at our station right now. We try to do all the work there ourselves, try to build it up. Uh, I, uh, think we just made a bunk room out of the old chief's office, or the chief's office. I want to move a door, so right now where the people stay at night in one room, the empty is in another room. And then, then you go out, so one person will be staying in this room and the other person staying in this room. So you have to walk out.
Mm-hmm.
And I, and this, uh, time, I don't think that's appropriate.
Yeah, understood. Thank you. You're up.
Yeah, what is a fire service innovation you'd like to bring to the department?
Fire service innovation? Uh, radio box system? So right now, all our commercial buildings and town buildings need fire alarm systems. Those fire alarm systems are, uh, usually, they either use a cell dialer or they have a dedicated phone line. So the, like, so now the town is paying for a dedicated phone line just for that. And it's not just for this building, it's for all the town wells, the police station, all the municipal buildings. Uh, I'd like to work with dispatch and maybe the surrounding towns to see if we could maybe implement the radio box system. The radio box system takes that place. One of the benefits of it is it also, uh, I think decreases response time by allowing, taking like the middleman out. So right now, if the Town Hall or the Henry Woods Building, fire alarm goes off, it gets reported to a central station. So someone picks up the phone or looks at the computer, it says, the Henry Woods Building in Barry's.
That would be, Rutland would be looking at it?
Yeah, but, no, but right now, it's not Rutland.
Oh, it's not?
Right now, it's like someone that the town's paying. So I think Brink's, there's all sorts of one, A V T, like, that type of. So if we brought in our own radio box system. Let's try, uh, we could, uh, we could, uh, decrease that amount of time. They could, like, two minutes for, like, to empty a school after, or to get a call from a alarm company for a school. Like, it's, it's all timed. So when, with the radio box system, that would, it would go right to Rutland. And Rutland would be like, okay, like, the school, or the school, or the
Henry Woods Building?
Henry Woods Building has a fire alarm going off, I can dispatch people right away. So that, I think it would cut costs eventually. I think initially, it might make costs a little higher, but I think later on, I don't, I'm not versed in how much the town spends right now on, or all the different towns spends on, uh, that monitoring service, so.
So where would that, where would, what do you do to monitor the services, like, on the town buildings?
Uh-huh, yeah, so they could monitor Police and Fire. Uh, I believe, uh, you could monitor, like, low level alarms at, like, town wells and stuff. So you don't have to have, and it's a radio system, and each radio box is a repeater, too. So if you put one, like, say you had to put one at the Henry Woods, and then you put one at, uh, the Old Town Hall. They all repeat, so they all eventually report. So if we have this huge range, if one system went down, like, you're not relying on phone lines, you're not relying on, uh, the cell service. It's, it just goes right to dispatch.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Do you have anything else to add? Team, right, you're up.
How do you communicate with and involve, motivate your staff and still preserve the command structure within the organization?
Uh, sorry, how do you communicate?
How do you communicate with and involve and motivate your staff and preserve the command structure within the organization?
Uh, communication is definitely key. Uh, you definitely have to include everybody. The, there's all sorts of different communications for different, uh, scenarios, I guess, is a good way to say it. So you wouldn't be communicating to someone at a fire scene the same way you would communicate them at, like, the station. It's more of authoritative and, uh, like, the station, you might be teaching somebody or something of that nature. I believe, uh, regular meetings between, like, officer, staff, and even, like, firefighters is an amazing thing. Keep everyone in the department. Uh, give them the information to know what's going on, like, what trucks have been fixed, or what issues we have, like, how can, uh, keep an eye on this. Uh, we go to the, we've been going to this residence a lot, like, watch out for the, like, things like that. And I think that helps motivate people because it brings more of a sense of, uh, like, a team and camaraderie, so.
How would you communicate with residents of the town of Barry and become involved in our community?
Okay, uh, one of the reasons I love working in Barry is it's a small town. I worked at Worcester Airport for a while as a, the last name change was Safety and Security Officer. We did aircraft rescue firefighting and fire suppression up there as long as the security. You were just kind of a number there. You were someone, when the people deboarded the plane, they got off. Uh, so community, the community is amazing. Uh, I would definitely do community outreach. I think we, you could do things like, uh, I don't know, I'm not a hundred percent sure if the chief does it, but he goes up to the, I, I know the police department's up at the senior center every once in a while. I know they have a coffee hour. Like, I think I'd go to the coffee hour, be able to ask, uh, answer any questions, get to know the community, uh, the senior community. We know a lot of them from the medicals we go on. Uh, I think Facebook, Facebook is good, or social media used right. Social, there's a lot of misinformation unfortunately on social media and all aspects of it. So used right, or you could do, uh, like, public safety campaigns, like, clear hydrants and, uh, tell up meetings, uh, things that are going on with the department. I think that's a great way. Uh, definitely attend Select Board meetings and town meetings. Uh, uh, we, right now, we're doing things like, uh, the SAFE program at the high school, or it's not the SAFE, but it's like a Fire Academy. Uh, I think it's an amazing program. It's getting, definitely letting the high schoolers know what we do. It's a, just a brief synopsis. It's not a full academy and, but they're learning and they're coming away with certain certifications, like First Aid, CPR. Uh, I believe they're coming away with some IMC, uh, not IMC, but Incident Management Training certs.
How many students participate in that?
Uh, I believe that's around twenty-five-ish.
Hmm, great.
I think, I think some have dropped out.
How unlike them.
Yeah, so I think they were hoping it was more of, Christina's really in charge. I've been working with her, helping her guide through it, but, so I think some of them were expecting the easy.
A little more action?
Yeah, or a little more action, or a little, maybe like an easier class, like.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Christina's doing a great job of that.
Okay, are there, are there grants out there that you have, have any information or knowledge about relative to, um, doing more things within the schools or as general community stuff?
We apply for the SAFE grant every year. Since I've started, I don't know if they were applying for it before, but that was one of my duties when I first started here. It was to get this, get back in the schools.
Okay.
Uh, so we started writing for the SAFE grant, and that can help pay for materials, educational materials, and also staffing.
Do you do anything at the elementary schools?
Yep. We do, we, at the elementary schools, we bring in the district's fire education trailer. It's just, it's got the smoke and.
Do they get hats?
They get hats.
Good. Or helmets, I should say.
The helmets that blow off.
Because that's a big thing.
Yeah, uh, yep, so they crawl out through that, like, we smoke it out and we have them crawl out. And then we, there's a window at the end and we're sitting there, we have pads on the ground. They're supposed to come and yell as loudly as they can at the windows. We get them all amped up before we send them back to class.
Thanks, yeah, I'm sure they're happy about that. That's great.
So, uh, how do you work collaboratively to enhance the level of diversity and acceptance of diversity within the Barry Fire Department?
Increase, and increase the level of diversity?
Um, yeah, we're, how, how would you work collaboratively to enhance the level of diversity and acceptance of diversity?
Well, I believe we are a pretty diverse fire department. We have a lot of female members, I think, for the, the area. We have people from multiple backgrounds, multiple races, multiple ethnicities. Uh, and I would continue on that road. Uh, I think educating people that anyone, like, if you put a lot of hard work into it, you can come and do this job. We had a member that moved into, actually Jake's house. And he was, he was probably in his thirties. And he's like, oh, I've always thought about being a firefighter. And one day, I'm like, he was from inner city Worcester. I was like, oh, why don't, why can't you be a firefighter? He's like, I can't do that. So like, why not? So we recruited him.
Mm-hmm.
Unfortunately, he passed away, but he was a, he was a good, he was very into it.
Mm-hmm.
He, I'm sorry, that, that's tough. Uh, but I think we just try to educate people. I know that we've gone to schools or even gone on calls where one of our female member walks by a little, a little girl in the house. And the little girl's like, mom, dad, that's a, that's a girl. Like, that's a, and unfortunately, like, it's not a, uh, big thing some places. Some places are all, all males, all white males, and that's, that's not good. You need people from every background, every race, every gen, like, just to be a well-rounded department. Everyone has their niche, everyone has a different, uh, the different backgrounds to help with any situation. Like, you never, like, our job, you never know what situation you're going to walk into, like. So I, I believe having a diverse department and everything is a, that's a good thing.
As kind of a follow-up to that, do you feel that your current, um, headquarters facility, do you feel that that hinders your ability to attract, uh, specifically like female employees, or do you have dedicated female locker room showers?
So, we do not have dedicated locker room showers. Up until, uh, a little after the Fire Chief got back, we didn't even have a true bunk room. Uh, there was two places for people to stay. One was in the kitchen slash training room slash day room slash office area. And then the other was, is the office.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so either one of the members has to walk out and through where the other member is staying. And the, I think that can cause some, not animosity, but some issues sometimes. Uh, having, we have one bathroom. It's on the other side of the station. Uh, it's, and it's just a, it's got just a toilet, a sink. And for some reason, there's two showers back to back, which I don't know is legal. I'd love to turn one into a closet. We definitely need storage. But I, I think, so I do think it hinders attracting females to the department. But I also think it hindered, uh, attracting some males.
Do you come up? What are the differences between your most recent position and the position of Fire Chief in the town of Barry? And how would you approach that transition?
The differences, I think, uh, right now, I can oversee personnel, but as the Fire Chief, you're in charge of all the personnel. So you're, right now, I can rec, I, I can't technically discipline someone, like, write, or give them a written warning. Like, that's higher than me according to our S O Gs. So as the Fire Chief, that you're responsible for all that. So if there's something, if, uh, officer brings that to the Fire Chief's attention, like, that's something you have to act on and act on correctly. And act on quickly. You don't want the person, or if it's a discipline issue, to keep going. Uh, right now, I'll tend to help Janine with payroll and, uh, uh, sorry, and billing, answering questions about what account things come out. Uh, the chief is responsible for overseeing all of that, uh, making sure we're not going over budget. I try to keep an eye on the budget just as much as I can, but that's the chief's, like, responsibility. He, while I'm the Fire Prevention Officer, the chief is actually the person that's granted me that power to be Fire Prevention Officer. And that power is granted by the State Fire Marshal. So if you didn't have a Fire Chief, you can't have a, a, like, inspector. You can't give out tickets, you can't give out warnings. So he oversees all that. He's, the Fire Chief oversees all aspects of, like, day-to-day operations. And where I do, but I don't, like, I still have to report to him if I have a question, him, like, or currently him, uh, so.
So if you were the, um, successful candidate and you were the chief, how would your behavior change on a day-to-day basis?
Uh, not sure. I try to do a lot of things that I think a chief would do and act the way, like, I try to act as professional as possible. Spend a lot of time at the Town Hall. I think, see here, I'm not as, here as much as Mark, but Mark could have a bed upstairs. But that's a good thing, like, people are committed. So I'm al- always trying to do that already, like, try to promote professionalism and learn. So, I'm sorry, what was the last part?
Just, just that, um, as, as you become the chief, or
How do you transition?
Yeah, how do you, how do you, how do you, in other words, you've been buddies with, okay, three of us, okay, constantly. Now you're becoming, you're the chief, and we're going to test you.
Yeah.
We're going to say, well, I'm not doing that.
Well, I think.
And so then you do what?
Yeah, then, I mean, that's where written warnings coming in, and that's when discipline comes in. Uh, I try to discipline already, like I said, to the point I can, and then pass it up the line, if it comes to that.
Yeah.
Rarely does. We have a lot of very hardworking people on the department. But you have to be stern in certain situations, like, you're, you're it. You're responsible for everyone's safety, the town's safety. So it's a, it's a big deal and.
Thanks.
What are the three principles that we, you would use to guide you as Fire Chief in Barry? And why do these principles stand out?
Uh, three principles? I believe leading by example, leading from the front is a great way to gain respect from your peers. Or in this case, if you're a Fire Chief, the people below you. So I definitely continuing, to continue to lead that way. Uh, I believe that is, uh, three. Train, training, I would definitely keep on training, like, definitely go, keep, uh, going to trainings at the academy. Keep up on everything and not push that, but, uh, stress how important it is to train. Uh, obviously, we go to less fires than we used to, which is an amazing thing. Like, I, as a Fire Prevention Officer, I, I would like to see no fires.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be, kind of, kill our jobs, but, uh, so I think emphasize training, show people how important it is. And then I think safety and mental health, I think, is a huge, a huge component of, like, my principles on, as a Fire Chief. We're, and we're, I'm, be responsible for, I think, on, there's thirty-something people, call people and per diems on our roster. Uh, we go to all sorts of calls. They're all, they can, all can be dangerous, everything. You never know what house you're going to step into, or you're going to step into a hole in the yard. A yard, so the safety is a huge, uh, importance of me, and mental health. Like, you got to watch your people, like, there's a lot of bad calls. You make sure you get people the right help. You can't force people to get help, but you got to present those opportunities to them.
What would, what would you do to, um, increase the number of individuals who want to participate in the Fire Department?
What would I do?
I mean, for on-call people, I know you're, we're short-staffed, right?
Yep. Okay, yeah, we are, we are short-staffed. And like I said, that's a nationwide, uh, issue. So I think we definitely have to do, we could do another recruitment campaign. Use social media, buy ads for the, uh, put ads in our local papers. Uh, reach out to other departments that might have people that live on the line. Maybe we could get them to work on both departments.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, definitely pub, like, education. I, I don't think a lot of the public actually knows what we do. Especially if you move in from outside of town to a, from a bigger city. Like, I do a lot of, doing a lot of the inspections, I always ask, oh, where are the people moving from? And there's a lot of people that are moving from bigger cities, and they're expecting a, like, three fire trucks to show up. And for a beeping smoke alert, which is a nuisance, not a nuisance call, but it could just be a battery. So I think education, like, hey, this is a combination department. The, in reality, the, uh, full-time part, aspect of it, component of it, supplements the call department. Like, we are taking the, those calls, the smells and bells calls, uh, the medicals. So when there is a major incident, people can come in and we can all work together to, uh, mitigate that incident. So I think it's extremely important to get public information of what we do. And if that's going to setting up a booth at the car show that they have down there, even, uh, the car show at the center of town, a different community events, uh, trunk or tree, just like, hey, this is what we do, we need some help. Uh, come on down, talk to us, have informational sessions, like, this is what we do. Unfortunately, right now, it seems like we, when we do get people to come in, we start going over the requirements. There's a lot of requirements. You have to pass a physical fitness test. You have to go to a, uh, a, uh, physical, firefighter physical, that's pretty in-depth. You don't have to get sort of, leave. You don't have to get certified, legally, you don't have to be certified. But you have to be taught to the standard firefighter one, if not two. And that's three, four hundred hours of training. So people come in and you tell them this, and then they ask if they wanna be an EMT, that's two hundred hours. If you wanna be a paramedic, you have to be an EMT, then you have to go to Paris. So a lot of people get discouraged by the amount of time, so.
Thank you.
So based on your experience, explain how you would organize the response to a multiple alarm fire in the community.
Multiple alarm fire? Multiple alarm fires, okay. That could be anything from a large building to if we don't get any help that day, it might just be a smaller building. So I would definitely, once the tones come in, I would be trying to figure out the address. Is it an address we go to? Like, have I been to this building before? Have I been to this house before? Do, is it a, a, I want to use word hoarding, but a hoarding situation? Is it a multiple apartment building? Uh, are we outside the water district? Am I calling, we have two run cards right now. Am I calling from the water supply, uh, run card, which is heavy on tankers and not as many engines? And then I'm thinking about that right to the scene. I'm listening to dispatch, looking, like, if I'm going down the road, I'm seeing a huge, uh, cloud of smoke. I might bump up to the next alarm, just going there. It's better to get people responding to our town than to wait. We are fifteen-ish minutes from our closest mutual aid, and that's in good weather. At night, there's no one staffing Hubbardson, so it might be a little longer from the, when the call members get to the house, like. So I'm taking that into all my, like, pre-planning. Once I get, arrive on scene, I'm gonna do a size up. I'm gonna walk around the building as the best I can, sometimes you can't. I'm gonna make another, think about, is this a good time, is there fire blowing out in every window? Is this gonna be a surrounded round? I'm looking at what vehicles are in the driveway, is this house occupied? I'm looking for residents that might have been in the house, try to get, see if everybody's out or building. And, uh, once I do that, I'm gonna have, give the orders to my first arriving companies.
So as the chief, you go first? You, you, you go to the scene first, as the chief?
Yeah, well, in Barry, we are smaller.
Yeah.
So as the chief, you might be driving the truck, you might be the officer on the truck.
Okay.
Like, so either you could be going first in the command car, like, if you're, have a good staff that day. Or you might send the, if there's three people working, send the engine, be like, oh, I'm off the water district. I'm gonna hop on the tanker and I'll drive that, and then take it to the command. So there's a lot of aspects to being the chief in a smaller town like this. You don't have the luxury of showing up in a, all the time, in a command car.
Yeah, right.
And running command from there. Sometimes you have to make do with the radios in the trucks, you don't have the command boards. You're gonna rely on the out, the next incoming chiefs, it's a multiple alarm apartment. Even with our working fire right now, we get mutual aid, so most of those chiefs show up, but they might be on the trucks too. So you're hoping someone brings you the command board, you're hoping someone, they arrive, so you can assign the chief roles as, like, water supply, safety, operations, try to, or even if it's a more senior member or a officer you trust, that you've worked with, like, you might be delegating those, uh, command, uh, functions to, uh, at. I would be looking at the fire. Now, we have a crew there, are we, is it being put out? Like, is it, is the smoke changing? Is the fire going down? What are they seeing from inside? Are we gonna have to, I'm gonna be making sure our RIT companies on scene, that they've done, if the safety officer's not there, if they've done a three sixty of the building, if they have all their tools, like, there's so many aspects that you have to be watching as the chief at a fire incident. It's, it's pretty, or into command, it's, it's a lot.
Okay, sounds like a lot.
Are you using any particular system to organize your scene? Way of functioning?
Way of functioning? I think it depends on the scene. I think, uh, like, we have a.
I guess I'm asking, are you using ICS principles?
Yeah, ICS, we're definitely going by ICS with incident safety operations, but not all the way down the line to, uh, budgeting and that aspect of it.
The town will be facing the need to reduce budgets and re-allocate finances. What would be your approach to increase on-call participation and control and reduce the fiscal needs of the department?
Control and reduce the fiscal needs of the department, okay. We, I think we, I touched on it a little bit, on trying to recruit some more, whether that be through the paper, the Facebook informational sessions. To get our current members to respond, I think, we, we kinda, our pay's a little low for call firefighters, or some members think so. I think, drop a little bit on that. I mean, nineteen dollars, I think, is for a probationary firefighter right now. I know the pizza place in town was advertising a couple of years ago, twenty-one dollars for, to make a pizza. And now we have people that are coming in and going into them.
Would you recommend the rate, would you recommend the rate fee?
I think we, the best way to recommend that would be to look at other surrounding towns. And see what the average rate is. I know this is obviously, this question, you're trying to limit the budget, so paying people more is kinda the opposite. But if you're going call, less people might be responding, so it might be a switch-off. I would, uh, maybe talk with the select board and finance committee, maybe talk about a, like, a tax break for firefighters. Like, so if.
Do you know of any of towns that do that?
I don't right now. Definitely wanna look it up. I know Sterling has talked about it, uh, but that has to be done right. You can't just be like, oh, every one of the departments is getting a tax break. I think you'd have to go off the year before. You'd have to come up with a number of calls.
That they came to.
That they've came to. But you've had to hit this many, this percentage of calls, either fire, EMS, or like, if you're, just, we have some members on the fireside, some are just EMS. Or if they're both, like, you have to hit a certain percentage of that.
Do you have any thoughts on possibly leveraging our relationship with UMass to have them help out? Because we have such a high call log in there.
Yes, we go to the health center quite a bit. We could always ask. UMass is a very large entity, and they have a lot of facilities, just like, uh, the health center. I think the health center is a little more unique than some, where a lot of people in town are used, are still on the old-school thought that it's kinda more like an urgent care. Like, you can run down there for this, you can run down there, like, for a fall, like, we're there a lot for people that just drive to the health center. Oh, I drove to the health center, I'm having a heart attack, I drove to the health center. Like, people treat it more like an urgent care, so we're there quite a bit.
When you say quite a bit, what is that? Three times a week?
I would say at least three times a week, on average.
Just one ru, one, one, um, run, three times a week?
Uh, we, we can go there three times a day sometimes.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it changes, it's.
Do you have, do you have, not you, but you know if there's any specific data? That, for example, if you were the chief and you had to sit down with UMass and say, hey, this isn't.
I believe we could use our IMC software.
Okay.
To look at that, we could search by address, how many call, how many medical calls we responded to there.
Okay.
Uh, I think we could also use our, I, you couldn't use the patient care part of a, of our patient care reports, but I think there might be a way to search how many times you go to certain addresses on it.
Yeah.
So that, you could use that to help leverage. Even if you got them to help with some training programs, have some docs come in, like, I think any, any help that they could contribute to the town and the department would be amazing.
Okay, thank you.
How would you build relationships and collaborate with other Barry department heads?
Definitely meetings, talking, face-to-face communication is key. I, you know, I was down, I was talking to the chief this morning. I'm always at the town hall, if you've seen me, asking questions, asking if you need anything, being there, helping people. I know, uh, in the past, I've called down DPW, just, hey, heads up, this road's icy, or, or, hey, there's water coming. I don't know if it's an issue, but try to be there if there was, uh, I, like, brought the light trailer down for water main breaks at night before I left for the day. I dropped off donuts if I've known they've been working somewhere at night, just, just being there, helping them when they need the help. And offering the help, I think, is a major, uh, strategy in making everyone get along for the betterment of the town.
Within your first hundred days as the fire chief, what are the three projects that you would collaborate with your staff to bring positive change to the department? And what are these top three? In other words, we've heard, at least from other candidates and from just, you know, talk around, that there's a lack of, the morale in the, in the, in the department is low. And I, I'm sure that there's reasons for that, that have nothing to do with the people and nothing to do with the select board, for all I know. Not that I think that, but, anyway. So what, within the first hundred days, what would you do?
I think one thing I would do, would definitely move that door.
So they could get out of that.
Yeah, I think that will help a lot. It'll also make some of the people that stay there feel a lot safer, and so I'd move that door. I think it could be done pretty cheaply. I think if you moved that door, you could reuse the old door if it was done right, and then maybe some drywall. And if we do it in-house, the labor wouldn't be crazy expensive. I think I would probably collaborate with some surrounding towns, maybe get some auto aid. I would also include the officers in, in the department to help, uh, figure out what calls need that auto aid. So then, once we all get together as different towns.
It's auto aid, I'm sorry.
Auto aid is when, so, we kinda do it now, but we kinda don't. So right, auto aid is, there's a reported building fire at blah, 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 Summer Street. And instead of, like, the chief or the first arriving engine showing there, they're like, yes, we have a working building fire. Auto aid is, there's, as soon as it gets toned out, the dispatch center will tone everybody out. So everyone on our, in, in the dispatch region, so, like, we could have Rutland on our way, so they're start heading up the road. Or they're toning out so they could get some call people. Hubbardson could be, are, be moving. We tend to listen, we, we're all on the same frequency, so we listen already, and we start getting ready. If we hear, oh, they have a building fire, like, oh, that's, they call our ladder. But this way, it's like, like an instant thing, like, so I think I'd collaborate with, like, the different chiefs to bring that in, in, in the department. Because you couldn't have it go, like, to every call. It would, it would bankrupt the department. Like, you couldn't have every call be like, oh, we're going to, uh, Oakham today for the fire alarm. Like, yeah, sometimes we get over there, some days they can't, some days we do have to go over there, they can't get a, a crew.
Yeah.
Sometimes they come this way, and we're delayed. But I don't think you could do it if you're going to every call. And I think it would burn people out. Was that two of them? I definitely, like, a health and safety.
Health and safety?
Uh, like, a safety and health and, uh, mental health.
Mental health.
Like, initiative, I think I'd see where the department members think we're lacking in that, like, are we, do we have the right stuff to clean gear? Do we have a, like, what do people think about our facilities when we're charting? Like, you're taking an ambulance, a laptop that could be in someone's house, and then it could be in the back of the ambulance. And, yes, we clean everything, but then it could, that could just be sitting on our kitchen table, because we don't have a lot of, like, workspaces for everyone. So is that something that we should, uh, look into? Should we, is there, like, something, uh, we all have a lot of space, is there some sort of workout, uh, equipment we should have at the station that people could work on? Just, like, not only keeping physically fit, but working out is a great way to clear your mind mentally and keep you on a good spot mentally. So, uh, also, like, mental health aspect, make sure every, like, people know the warning signs and everything, talk about it, like, make it a, uh, not a, no, oh, no, I don't need help, I, like, sometimes in the fire service, you become, people are tough, like, oh, I'm fine, I'm fine. But make it normal that we can, uh, talk about these things, like, talk about these bad calls that we have sometimes multiple days in a row.
Also?
Yes, thank you.
Describe a difficult situation where you were involved in disciplining an employee, and why was it difficult?
As acting assistant chief last year, I had, like, one, this comes to mind, like, instantly. Me and a member, I, this member wasn't doing all their chores, or they were doing them kinda poorly. And I had multiple times approached this member and been like, hey, what's going on? Like, a truck check, what's, the truck check's done, but it's not done, or, hey, did you fuel that truck when you did the truck check? Did you bring it outside and run it up? And me and this member, like, just kept talking about, was talking about this. So finally, I was, had to, like, I'm gonna write you up, what is going on? What is the matter? Like, you're, this is unlike you. I later found out that there were some home issues going on. We talked about it, we broke it down, talked out, like, I don't wanna write you up, like, I don't wanna write this up and tell you to the chief. While I was the acting chief, I still couldn't, uh, technically write somebody up. So I had to present it to the chief, like, the, not the chief, the acting chief. I didn't wanna, like, I don't wanna present, I'm, like, I don't wanna give them a written statement saying, this person's not doing this, this mess on this occasion. Like, so we talked about it, we worked it out, we figured out some issues, steered them in the right direction with the homes stuff. I actually did write the letter to the acting chief. I said, if this happens again, I didn't date it, I put it in my desk drawer. I said, if this happens again, I'm gonna, like, it's an instant now. What made this hard? We're a small department. Like, you brought it up earlier, like, one day, you're eating next to each other, people, families are coming in. It's, it can be extremely hard to discipline someone, a coworker, that's, like, you become family working in such tight quarters and doing this job. So that's a, that's a huge issue.
Describe your leadership style and reference a leader that has contributed to shaping your career.
My leadership style? Well, there's, I know there's all sorts of different leadership styles. But I think in this field, in this position, you can't just be stuck on one. Every situation, you, you need a different leadership style. At a fire scene, you have to be more strict, more authoritative. At a training, you might be more delegative, you might let different crews run things and see how they go, give them some experience running calls. If you have a new recruit, I think you have to, like, drop down to, like, really, really hands-on, like, just showing them how to do everything. So I think my leadership style, uh, changes, it's dynamic. I think that you have to be dynamic, you have to be able to make quick decisions some minutes, and then some minutes you have to be like, hey, what do you think, like, cool, like, the amazing part of being a fire, uh, call department is that there could, everyone's got a different background. You could have site work people, you could have electricians, you could have computer programs, and so, like, And so, like, if you're at an incident, like, hey, we're at this house, it smells like burning electrical. If, we have an electrician on the apartment, like, what is going on? Like, what do you think's going on? And they might be able to tell you that. So you gotta be able to know when you can grab someone from your crew. Uh, I, the, who has most affected my leadership style is tough. I've, I've worked for, with and for some amazing chiefs. Uh, the Sterling Chief is an amazing chief. He, uh, he's, I've learned a lot from him over, over the years. I'm on some of those special teams, dive and tech, technically, I'm on the FIU, which is Fire Investigation Unit. And those teams are oversaw by a chief named, uh, Sully, out of Lunenburg. Great guy, learned a lot from him. All these people could, all worked at different departments. And I also think, uh, Rob was a, is a great chief, like. So I think I've been affected by multiple leaders in, in developing this leadership style.
Why is this position the best match for you personally? And how will you balance the often competing needs of the very fire department and your family?
Okay, uh, I've always, once I started, and, I'm not gonna say always. When I first started, I was like, oh, man, I, being a chief, that looks like a lot of work. And then, as I did it more and did it more, I was like, oh, like, that's kind of a, like, you're influencing the, the direction of the department, you're influencing the safety of the department, you're influencing the safety of the town. There's a lot of responsibility. Uh, I ran my own business for many years. Uh, I liked that responsibility, I liked running the business, I like, I like running things. Sorry, can you repeat that question?
Why is this position the best match for you personally?
Okay.
And how will you balance the often competing needs of the very fire department and your family?
Uh, I've been, so I've also been work, I've been working on this a long time, taking classes. Uh, I've always worked with our chief, trying to learn all the aspects of the different jobs. Uh, I really enjoy working in Barry. It's a smaller community, and, uh, I definitely have, feel more at home in a smaller community. You get to touch people's lives more, I think that's a good way of saying it. Uh, whether through community service or educa, uh, education, or your calls, or incident command. So, and that's one, another reason I, I wanna be at the chief here. I don't wanna leave here, this is where I wanna retire from, this is the department I wanna be at. Like, could've left before, and I decided to stay, I decided I wanna make a career out of Barry, so I think that's a best fit for me. My family life, uh, I'm single, so that's pretty much ea, easy. I work quite a bit, uh, and then I do a couple hobbies, work out, and I fish, and, uh, try to visit my nieces and nephews. But I think I know that I could spend a lot of time dedicating myself to this department, as I have in the past.
Let me, let me ask you a, a question. Um, if you were the successful candidate, and obviously there's other in-house candidates that wouldn't be successful, what is the kind of impact, or how would you work with people who had, you know, interviewed and, you know, tried for this position, just you have, and they didn't get the job? And vice versa, you don't get the job, and somebody else is, in-house candidates does? How, how does that work out for you? And how do you handle that?
Uh, it's funny, you say that, uh, we all kinda ta, have talked about it a little bit. Like, hey, if you get it, I'll support you, if you get it, I'll support you. Uh, I think that's the best thing you can do, we're all one team, we're all a family. Uh, there's a, like, everyone has, there's a lot, the, I, I know the two other candidates, and who they are, and I know they have a lot of skills, and I know they have, like, some various backgrounds in fire service and other aspects, like. So I think, just work with them, and, and I would, if I wasn't the chief, I would, like, help them along. Like, I, I know a lot about the day-to-day operations of the department. I'm there four days a week for ten and a half hours. I've worked on the budget, I've worked with the budgets, I've managed it. I think I'd help push them on, like, not push them along, but teach them. If they had questions, I would answer them the best I could. Uh, and if they asked me and I didn't know, I would be like, hey, I don't know. Like, uh, we'll have to figure that one out together. Uh, as the chief, I think they, the, the two of them have this, if I became the chief, have the, kind of, the same mindset in speaking with them. So, I think it would, I think it's gonna go well if we get in and help scan it.
Okay, thank you. Um, we are at the end of our questions.
We have one add-on question.
Oh, you do, okay, why don't you hang?
Tell us about something that you failed at once and what you learned from it.
Something I failed at once? Well, I was talking about our firefighter, Miles. Uh, he was a good guy, like I said, he passed away, his health declined. He never actually told us the reason it was his doing. But I saw Miles every day. When I pulled in to the station, he was leaving for work. So I talked to him almost every morning. Uh, he was on the apartment, his kid, uh, played in the, like, that property that's there doesn't have a yard, so, like, they'd be riding his little bike in the apartment. I, uh, I kinda feel like I've, I failed him. Like, I, I tried to, he gave up, you could tell, like, one day, he, he was the most, like, positive person in the world, like, oh, yeah, yeah, my car's broken, but I'm gonna figure out, I'll get to work, like. And then one day, like, when that broke, like, you could see it, like, he broke. I don't know if he got bad news from the doctors or what, but one day he broke, and you could tell he kinda gave up. And I wish I had kinda been there more, like, I tried, but having pushed somebody, so. So I wish I was able to help him more and his son, and his son was a good kid, and was little, but it was, it was, oh, it was, I think that's a failure. Uh, but I did, uh, what I did after that, with his death and everything, I, uh, I got help. I learned a long time ago, I had a bad dive call, uh, where I pulled a child out of a pond in Lancaster, that, and I was that gung-ho, I'm all right, I don't need to talk to anyone person. Uh, that call, we made sure we got in, uh, had a debriefing with Miles. We, I, I spoke to the folks at Onsite, which is an amazing facility, I don't know if anyone, you know who it is. Uh, I, I have suggested to many people, hey, you should go talk to them at Onsite. They understand, this is what they do, they specialize in the, this, in our fields, like, they'll understand. It's not just you, how you're feeling this way, so. But, yeah, I think that's a failure that hits me. And, uh, I think, I don't know if I put, I think I would definitely handle it a little different. Definitely just sto, step back and assessed what I thought I did wrong, or if I could've helped more, if I could've pushed more, like, I know, at this time, his car was broken. Should I have been like, hey, take a day off? Like, what doctor do you need to go to? But I don't know if he would've taken it anyways, but.
I know you already kinda touched on this a bit, but could you just share with us any experience you have with budgets and grants?
Oh.
And some, some detail?
Well, before last, before the chief was away, I, uh, with the budget, he would, I would, I would, I would be there with him when he was writing the budget, and we would talk about it, and he would show me what we were doing. Uh, I would attend some meeting, uh, the finance committee and select board meetings with them. We'd go over the different aspects of, like, like, how much it costs for staffing? How much do we get from the ambulance billing col, company rolled into our account? Because that offsets a large portion of our staffing cost. Uh, so before that, that was kinda my role, where I was just, I'd review numbers, like, so, yep, I think everything adds up. Uh, when he, when I became assistant chief, I managed the budget. We had already worked on it the previous year, it had already been voted on, and I managed it. I kept track of our, what we bought, our labor cost, made sure that we weren't going over on overtime. Uh, just kept managing it the best I could. Uh, I don't think we want to go over, maybe on my line, because I got a little more pay that year. So my, the fire inspector line in the budget might've gone up a little bit. Uh, grants, uh, I wrote, I've written, like, the fire, the safe grant multiple times. I've written the, uh, the volunteer fire act grant. Anytime the chief wrote a bigger grant, whether it be for hose, or the fire engine, or, uh, or any other, like, the jaws, I would go over the grant. So we would talk about what equipment we needed, then we would, he would write the grant, he'd kinda show me, go through it with them. I would watch, also go through, like, most of those big grants, you have to watch, uh, take a webinar first. You have to be a, you have to, just to make sure you, you know what you're doing, how you're doing it right. Uh, and I, so I would go over it with them and proofread.
Do you have any quick question for us of any kind?
Actually, I really, uh, so I may, like, I think, as we know, the small fire departments, it's, it's getting harder and harder to run. Cost of emergency equipment, vehicles, every aspect of it is skyrocketing across the country. Uh, I just wanna know the different, what the board stance on regionalization.
Personally, should investigate it ASAP?
I agree.
And be prepared to act.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know with whom, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't think it's just fire. I think regionalization is going to, you know, be an aspect for all departments.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's, you know, uh, potentially inevitable at this point. There's, you know, one report that's saying towns in Western Masses, we understand them, won't, effectively won't exist by 2100.
Yeah, uh, I mean, you look at, like, you say all different departments, you look, like, New Hampshire. Uh, New Hampshire DOT does a lot of the smaller towns, like, roadwork, so, and maintenance that way. Like, New Hampshire DOT is huge, but, I mean, that, it's a type of regionalization.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's a, you know, a little bit off, you know, in the future, but I do think that it needs to be fully investigated, like Maureen does. I mean, it's, it seems is the only way it could, uh, really work in the future to me.
Yeah, and it has the.
But I have limited depth in my knowledge of fire service.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, that's really, I'd say, one.
Okay, uh, and then, I just have one other question, is, uh, what's your vision for the department in the future?
If I had a vision, obviously, it's, it's, it's a department that has the capacity to do the job.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and by capacity, I mean, the training that's available to the people who work there.
Mm-hmm.
A decent place to wo, in which you could work and live when you have to be there for 24-hour shifts. So my vision is, uh, it's a little costly, but it's, in my opinion, it's necessary. Because if we don't have the capacity for people to do the job, we can't expect them to be able to accomplish it. So whether it's the amount of salary, whether it's the, you know, I think we got stuff, we got stuff.
Yeah, we have a lot of great.
We have a lot of good stuff, but what we don't have is really, um, you know, the, I guess, the salary structure and so on and so forth is necessary. Um, I think the, the, the department has done a lot in training, but could do more.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I know that there are times now where there's, you know, if people, the tones go when there's nobody here.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And Hubbardson, or Howard, or somebody has to come over here and back us up, and, uh, they're.
I'm sorry to cut you off, but as a member here, that's embarrassing, it's.
Yeah, well, it's, it, it's embarrassing, but it's dangerous.
Yeah, I agree. We are mutually, it's so far away, not super far away, but it's far enough away.
Exactly, yeah.
I agree.
Uh, so, so I would say, you know, as far as my vision, I, I would like to see someone come in who's, um, ready to work with and encourage growth in the members of the department to help build and strengthen the, the skills and the people.
Okay.
Someone who's ready to work for the benefit of the town, who is focused on the community, the benefit to the community of having a strong department.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a willingness to work with all departments, with not just, you know, DPW and, uh, police, but also with accounting, with town administrator, with all those departments. And then, um, primarily from the board's perspective, someone who's willing to help the select board help them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, whether that's finding funding for things, or just telling us when we're being stupid about something, and being very blunt with us.
The most information, the most research, the best information that, that is truthful and transparent, like, like, hey, this is what all the studies are saying, this is what our call volume is, so, I understand.
That's pretty much, is what I, you know, with my limited, you know, depth, I, I agree with Maureen. Um, I would, also with John, but, um, mostly, I could turn to Maureen's vocal box.
Okay.
From the gate. Uh, again, it's, it's all, like, new to me, as far as, you know, like, trying to basically rebuild the department, more or less, you know, so. I, you know, uh, we need all the help we can get.
Yes, we do, we definitely do.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you so much, yeah.
Great to see you.
We're at that tonight. Thank you very much for, for participating in our job search and taking interest in the town of Barry. And, uh, we have some questions for you, and obviously, we are happy to make your acquaintance this evening. So I'm just gonna start out, um, with the questions, and Mr. Dixon will begin the, the questioning, and then we'll, please feel free to, you know, augment the question, then answer it with, with depth, whatever, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Uh, first, thank you for coming tonight, I appreciate it. And, um, so, uh, first question we have for you, uh, what have you done to prepare for the position of fire chief in the town of Barry? And what differentiates you from other candidates?
What I've done to prepare myself for a chief position, not just with the town of Barry, but in general. Um, I'm in the process of finishing my associate's degree, should be done early 2027. Uh, I'm certified in fire officer three, I've completed the CFO program of the Massachusetts Fire Academy, as well as a credential fire chief.
Um, is there anything that differentiates you from other candidates? That, that really sets you apart?
I'm sure there are things, I mean, without getting, knowing the candidates in depth, I wouldn't wanna really opine on saying that I'm better than someone at this or that, it's not fair to anybody else. But, um, what I think that would maybe set me apart is my, my drive and my willingness to, uh, expand my horizons.
When you say what your drive, what do you mean?
By drive, I mean, I'm focused on the job at hand. I'm generally not looking other places, doing things. My goal is to do one job, do it well, and master that job.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm good for now. What challenges do you see facing the Barry Fire Department and the town in this upcoming year?
To be perfectly honest with you, I can't really speak orally intelligently about financial issues with the town, if there are any budgetary aspects, without having, you know, looked at the spreadsheets. But in general, if I were to take a holistic approach on communities and the Commonwealth, as well as nationwide, um, I think inflation has finally caught up to a lot of communities, and a lot of communities now have been, communities during, you know, the, the height of inflation communities during, you know, the, the height of inflation has caused, we, we, towns have kind of gone, if it used, eat away at their levy capacity. And more and more communities now are at their complete levy capacity and forced to decrease services or a proposition to an F override, which no community really wants to do.
So you basically would say that our primary, um, challenge facing the, uh, the fire department would be, uh, financial.
That's what I can, I can imagine. I mean, I haven't, I wouldn't.
I'd say you're accurate on that assessment.
I think that's one of the major ones, but I don't think it's necessarily the only one. But that's for me to think.
I would, you know, I, what I would say to follow up with that would be, without, I would, before I really wanted to, you know, fully answer that, meet with, you know, all of the firefighters, paramedics, EMTs. Get their idea of where the things are, meet with the select board, the TA, and just get a whole view, a three sixty view of, of the community of the department before I could.
Okay, thank you.
You have some?
Yeah, thank you.
So what is a fire service innovation that you'd like to bring to the department, Barry?
I think, um, AI is going to be a kind of a game changer for the fire service. As much as it's scary. You know, using, you know, students using chat GPT to pretty much freeze through school and, and, but it, it does have its place in the fire service, especially.
Could you give me just some specifics of AI and what you would imagine AI that would be applicable to the.
So what AI can do is, um, my understanding, I've seen it, uh, some articles about the fire service is it can help draft policies. It has the ability to cut down on the amount of work, potentially the research. Obviously you have whatever AI spits out, you kind of have to, you know, self verify. But I think it cuts down on the amount of, um, time. So you're, we could focus time on other things. And possibly give some innovative, um, solutions that, you know, one or two people may not have thought of.
I say, I think.
How do you communicate with, involve and motivate your staff and preserve the command structure within an organization?
Communication is the, one of the, the hallmarks of a smooth running organization, especially in the fire service. Everybody wants to know what's going on. I think consistent communication is important. Uh, one thing that I did find, um, the chief McElhany in Westminster, when he was the chief, used to send out a weekly newsletter, if you will. Chief Devola, Chief Butterfield kind of followed through with that. And some of the information can be repetitive, but it's a consistent flow. Every Friday, you know that you're going to get an update on the fire department.
Is this to the community or to the department?
This is just to the department members as a whole. And that can, that can contain, you know, training information, significant calls, uh, apparatus out of service or need service type of things and just an update on things.
Gotcha.
And I think also with communication, uh, with younger people in the fire service, they have a specific need for constant communication. They don't like, I'll say they, younger generations tend to not like not knowing. Knowing is the most important thing for them. They've grown up with a cell phone, with, uh, volumes and libraries right in their hands.
Um, how do you preserve the command structure within the organization too?
Preserve it. Preserve the command structure is important. My primary goal with that would be using, uh, succession planning. I think that the more people that know how to do the job and love them, the better. I think that maintains some level of discipline as well because a, for example, if a firefighter is learning the uh, requirements to be lieutenant, that lieutenant's going to cut, that firefighter is then going to understand when a lieutenant or a captain says, do X, that's why they're asking you to do it. And that again goes back to my comment, um, about the younger generation. Because I said so doesn't work with, with the new generation. So I believe using succession planning would would be the way to preserve the command structure.
How would you communicate with residents of the town of Barry and become involved in our community?
Communicating with the, with the, with the citizens, the customers of the community is very important. I would utilize, uh, leverage, uh, social media as much as possible. One idea that I would be interested in looking at would be maybe having an open office hours for the community of like a, a coffee hour or something once or twice, once a week. Possibly, you know, going to a senior center and just sitting and getting time to meet people, see what the needs are.
How do you work collaboratively to enhance the level of diversity and acceptance of diversity within a fire department?
Diversity, I know as of recent, it's become a very hot topic, but, um, it's, it's imperative to the fire, to the, to public service. Ways of, um, leveraging some of that, some of those diversity issues is starting young. Get into the high schools. Uh, I think that our vocational and trade schools have missed the mark on not having a fire, a public safety shop, if you will, either focusing on fire, police EMS.
I agree with your beer.
I think, and I think that's, that's where you harness the, the diversity is you can show a, a thirteen year old female that may not have been thought about being a firefighter or a paramedic or an EMT. If they see that, that they can do that at a young age, more and more people will hopefully, uh, take that opportunity. And when they take that opportunity, more and more people are going to see that it's, anybody can do it. It's not a, say, a white male job anymore.
How, how serious would you be about working with the high school to put such a program together?
I, I think it would be very well worth it. Um, I can't say, I don't, without kind of going deeper into it, I don't know what the, what the lift would be. Um, I definitely would be a supporter of it in any which way I could as the fire chief.
Great. Okay, thank you. What are the differences between your most recent position and the position of fire chief in the town of Barry? And how would you approach the transition?
Currently, I am a lieutenant in a fire department with five people a shift. Uh, for the past four months, I've been acting shift commander. I have probably a little bit three years of actual work shifts, work shifts as shift commander. The transition from that's going to be more understanding that my role will be in an office a lot more. You know, when the, when the, when the bell rings, it's not really my job to hop on the fire engine and do the things that I'm so used to doing. So that transition I see is going to be probably the, the biggest hurdle I have of realizing that that's going to be someone else's job. My job is to ensure that they have everything that they need.
Because of the, our, shall I say, the, the amount of people we have working in the, the department, I think some of your jobs still would be jumping on the ladder, jumping on, uh, jumping at least on the ambulance.
Which is even better.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm against it. I'm saying that it's, I can't push, I can't push a paramedic off and be like, I'm doing this today.
Oh, trust me. We'd be, okay, no, I, just the, the idea that you would be willable, willing and amenable to understanding that there will be times when the written word, the policy work has to take, okay, a second seat to jump on the ambulance.
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, a little concerned, you, you are located in Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh and so forth. And I know, I know that route to route very well myself. And, um, we have, it ends up, we, the tones are in, it's, you know, ten o'clock in the morning on Sunday and you, you know what the shift looks like and stuff. Do you come?
If it's something that I need to, absolutely.
Okay, what would, something that you needed to be here be?
If the, if the, if the department was sufficiently staffed.
Okay.
You know, a, a general ambulance call, I would feel that would be necessary. If there was a reported building fire, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Um, given the distance that I have.
You'd be here in a half hour.
Half hour, but that also goes back to the, the, the command structure question of,
Right.
my job would be to ensure that the line officers, the lieutenants, the captains and the assistant chief have that ability to function in that amount of time.
Okay, so, so part of your transition work would be to make certain, okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You want to say?
Yes, thanks.
What are three principles that you will use to guide you as a fire chief in Barry? And then why these principles stand out?
Three principles would be honesty, integrity and consistency. Having been a firefighter for twenty years, those are the things that I've found that will make or break a department. As far as honesty goes, there's no reason to lie to, to lie to the staff or the citizens. If we're not providing a, if we are, if we're not providing a service that we need to provide, just outright tell, tell the citizen, we can't provide this because of X or, you know, options. Just, it is what it is. The, the, the citizen, the customer may not like that, but they have a right to know. Integrity. Always take the moral high ground. Make sure that you're on, you're always doing what is best for the members first and the citizens. And as far as consistency, consistency in your communication is, is key. Consistency in how you talk to people, how you deal with people is important. How you, you treat one person the same exact way you treat the other. So those would be the three examples of.
Based on your experience, explain how you would organize a, a response to a multiple alarm fire in the community?
To re, uh, respond to a multiple armed community, I would utilize the ten alarm run card that I believe the community already has in place. With that, my first priority would reach out to the departments on those ten alarm run cards, introduce myself, make a good working relationship with them.
So go for a little more detail of how you, how you're actually responding to the multi alarm fire itself.
As far as like what apparatus would go or how?
Just the overview of, of a response, uh, things you're thinking as you're going and.
Uh, as I'm going is, um, safety of, uh, the citizen is number one. Number two is the safety of the members of the department. Generally speaking, the, the kind of mantra is we risk a lot to save a lot. We risk little, save little. If there is a need to make a rescue, to affect a rescue, I have no problem putting some, you know, putting a firefighter in harm's way. If there is no chance of making a rescue, there's no need to. I see no point in putting a firefighter in harm's way to, for not, for no reason. Uh, other things I'm thinking about are the effect of the, of the, using a building fire, a residential building fire as an example. What's the downstream effect going to be for, uh, the resident of that home? Ensure that they have a place to go afterwards. Make sure that they understand the next steps. Work with Red Cross, Salvation Army to ensure that, you know, they have a place to go that night. They have another change of clothes. Those be my, those are my larger priorities.
Okay, thank you.
The town may be facing the need to reduce budgets and reallocate finances. What would be your approach to increase on-call participation and control and reduce the fiscal needs of the department?
One way to look at, um, recruiting more, uh, call firefighters is advertisement. I mean, there's a reason why Indeed is such a big website now. There's a reason why all these advertisements for, for jobs. Make people want to be interested in it. You know, you can't just, you know, the days of a little, something in the paper saying Barry Fire Department hiring call firefighters, that's, doesn't really exist anymore. You gotta kind of make it a little more action packed, especially with younger people. One way to also look at it is to reach out to maybe some of the, the next ring out in communities. See if any town members of those communities would want to come and be call firefighters in Barry.
Follow up to that, um, what would you do to increase the participation of the current on-call firefighters?
That's a difficult question. The hard part about increasing participation is it's a balance between, we need the people all the time, but some people are busy. So it's hard to say, to put a, you know, rule with an iron fist and say, if you don't make X amount of calls, you can't be a member of this department. Because if out of a hundred calls, they make five, well, there's more people than I had for those five calls than I would have. But, um, to kind of use sugar as a, sugar versus stick, you know, pay is always, you know, very important, but also be feeling, making sure that they feel like they're part of the organization. Uh, a lot of times in departments that have their combination departments like Barry, sometimes the, the, the call staff, the call firefighters feel pushed aside when, when career comes in. And there's a, there has to be a place where they both coexist equally.
Uh, in, in the position as fire, fire chief in the town, you'd be responsible for, um, with the assistance of the, or, or shall we say, having us tag along, be responsible for, you know, negotiating up the contracts with the, with the paramedics and so forth. And comfortable with that?
Absolutely. I've been in my, with Southborough, I was the union vice president for eleven years. We just, I just negotiated our fifth contract. I don't have much experience on that side of the table, but.
That's okay.
Um, one of the most important things is a joint labor management relationship.
Thank you.
Uh, how would you build relationships and collaborate with other Barry department heads?
I think constant communication. Um, I don't know if this community has like a weekly, monthly kind of department head meeting. Even if it's like some sort of informal thing, um, it's important to work well with every department from council on aging, DPW, police, schools. They're all, they're all customers of the fire department in some way.
Do you have any, um, idea about how you would improve collaboration between department heads if it doesn't exist in the community very much?
I think, um, one of the first things you, I would have to do as the fire chief would kind of reach out to all those department heads.
So you would do some initiation?
Yeah, it's, I'm the new person. It's my job to, to come to the people who've already been here. It's not their job to find me.
Thank you. Am I it?
That's yours.
Okay, I always lose track of who's turning it in. Within your first one hundred days as fire chief, what are the three projects that you would collaborate with your staff to bring positive change to the department? And why these three?
So again, that's going to be a question that I'm just not going to be able to efficiently answer. I would have to meet with those, with the staff to figure out what those three projects would be or to prioritize the, the top three. And generally speaking, um, equipment, morale and staffing are kind of the, the three hallmarks that if I was on the other side of the, the table where I would want to focus on.
Thank you.
Can you give any just, um, kind of generalized examples of, of what type of projects could help with those three things you mentioned?
The hard part with just about all of them is it comes down to money. When it comes to a full-time staff, it comes down to money. I can't blame anybody for that. That's how they feed their family. That's how they support their family. With that being, you know, in short supply, I think, you know, some maybe some shorter acts of kindness. Um, I had a chief once who every Friday brought donuts. I mean, I'm not saying that that's going to, a dozen donuts is going to be, make people love you. But I think a small token like something like that of we appreciate, you're appreciated, does tend to go a long way.
Yep.
Describe a difficult situation where you're involved in disciplining employee and then why was this difficult?
So believe it or not. So believe it or not, I have never had a difficult situation of discipling an employee. My thought behind that is if I have to discipline somebody for something that's significant, I'm the one that failed. Because my management style is give everybody the tools to do the job, let them do the job. So if they fail at doing the job, that's on me. As the leader of the organization or as the leader of the shift, that's on me. And I can say that I've done that successfully. So I've never had to discipline a difficult employee, if you will. However, if I had to, it comes down to, as soon as the issue happens, you let the employee know that they made a mistake, if you will, for lack of a better term. And you provide the minimum amount of discipline to make sure that doesn't happen again. Heavy-handed discipline doesn't work. Sometimes it's needed. But generally speaking, it's the minimum amount to get the job done. And then move on and maybe take that negative. If there, if it was a situation where someone did something wrong, you know, they, say they, they snapped another firefighter because that other firefighter didn't know how to run the pump on an engine. We'll take that as a learning opportunity of maybe that person who, you know, I'm disciplining now because they snapped at the other firefighter. Put that firefighter in a position of teaching those people how to run that pump, you know? Get them on board to be part of a problem, I'm sorry, part of a solution.
You touched on it a little bit, but describe your leadership style and reference a leader that's contributed to shaping your future.
And it goes back to some of the other comments I made. As far as leadership style for me, I like to lead from the front. I can't imagine myself ever trying, saying, being in an office and saying, "Go wash a fire truck." If, I believe that, I would never ask somebody that I would not, something to do, I would never ask somebody to do something that I wouldn't do myself. Understanding that the rank structure, sometimes I have to ask people, I have to delegate tasks. But I would never ask, if I, if I have the opportunity to do something, I'm going to do it. Say it was washing a fire truck, I would, you know, grab the, the staff that's working that day and I would do it with them. Great time to kind of get to know how people are doing. And it goes back to like what I, and also what I said before of kind of a democratic leadership style in the fire station, like I'm on shift today and Saturday. When it comes to doing things around the station, as far as like house chores and whatnot, I don't care who does what. Everybody knows what needs to be done. I have faith that it's going to get done in a timely manner on a fire scene. Autocratic, autocratic decision-making has to be, leadership style has to be done. There's no time for discussion. The members of my group know that if I make a decision on a fire scene, that's what it is. And if they have a question afterwards, I a hundred percent expect to have a discussion. There might be times where that, that person saw something that I didn't. It'll be a learning opportunity for anybody, everybody, but on scene, it's, there's no democratic. It's what I say goes.
Was there a particular leader that you worked with that you felt was helpful in you generating this style?
So weirdly enough, it is a former captain that I had that was the complete opposite. I believe that unfortunately, we tend to learn a lot more from our poor leaders than our great, than our great leaders.
Okay, let me ask you one question, one question. Have you been to our facilities at all?
I have not.
Thank you.
Why is this position the best match for you personally? How will you balance the often competing needs for the Barry Fire Department and your family?
I think this position is a good fit for me because I have, you know, some experience in the smaller communities, being a part-time deputy chief in Bolton as well, a smaller community, about the same population. Magically enough, also has, is the home of a regional school.
It sure is. It's also a regional, it's also a town with a per capita income which is far and away different than theirs.
Absolutely.
Just letting you know, because it's different. It's a very, very nice place, Bolton.
But as far as, you know, like per cap income, in my experience, I've worked in, you know, really rural towns that don't really have, you know, poor per capita income. I've worked, you know, currently I work in one of the wealthiest communities in the state.
Right, you sure do.
There's no difference. People are people. You treat everybody the same. As far as how I balance the work-life structure, I believe in trying to disconnect as much as you can. Going back to the leadership organization, if my job is to work eight to five, eight to four, understanding that you're called back for emergencies or if anybody has any questions, time away is good. I like to travel when I'm not working. My son will be twenty-one in December and he'll be a paramedic in October.
Oh, great, great. It must be, make you proud.
Yes and no. I am very proud of him. He's finished firefighter one, two last year, so.
Great. Well, you have to, you have to feel pretty proud of him.
I, absolutely.
Great, great. Okay, do you have any questions of us?
Before we get to that, we have a couple lectures. Sorry. Could you share some, any experience that you have with budgeting or grants?
I have experienced budgeting. When I was EMS director in Southborough, I had kind of carte blanche of the EMS budget as far as budgeting durable medical equipment, supplies and whatnot. As far as grants go, I have experience. I wrote an AFG grant about ten years ago successfully. And I've also collaborated on the DFS grant and some of the smaller ones, but.
Tell us a time when you failed at something and what you learned from it.
I would say the first time I took the lieutenants exam, I passed, but I didn't put everything I had into it and I placed bottom on the list. Luckily, that list got exhausted. But that taught me that if you want something, you need to work for it. There's no shortcuts in life.
If I could just follow up on one thing you mentioned earlier. You mentioned AI in regards to policy. Could you just expand a little on the role that policy has in, in your perspective for a fire department?
So what I, what I meant by that was if you need to, if the department needs a new policy, you know, you could put into chat GPT, draft a policy on SCBA use at carbon dioxide emergencies. And it's going to spit out.
Yes, right.
A policy. So I would generally, I might use something like that and review it. Look back at, at, you know, reference documents that would, to see where it is, maybe change a little bit. But that would cut down potentially days as well as, one of the other things that AI has been used recently for is, a lot of departments have put in, write a training, annual training plan that meets NFPA, ISO requirements. That would literally take weeks to come up with a training plan that does that.
So I'm, I'm sorry, though, aside from the AI portion of the, what, what, could you just share a little more about like your, of the role of policy in a department from your perspective?
Oh, the role of policy, okay.
And how, how that implements into things?
So roles of policy are important. It kind of sets the, tests the, the guardrails of what your department, what your organization's going to do. I don't believe in a policy being so strict that this, "I want something done A, B, C, D." I think there needs to be some latitude. But like I said, guardrails. You can't policy everything. You have to have faith that your staff is going to do the right thing the majority of the time. But that is just there to say, this is what I expect of the organization. And there are some obvious policies that you, there are boilerplate that you need to have. You know, your sexual harassment, your drug testing, you know, your, your hard ones. But generally, operational procedures are guardrails.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions? Do you have any questions of us?
Probably when I get five minutes down the road, about five will pop in my head, but right now I can't think of anything.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for taking the time to, it would be great to get to know you a little bit and to think about you as our fire chief. We have four candidates for the position and you're the last interview. So we will be spending some time, you know, going through all of our notes that we've taken and all of that and be back in touch with you, I'm guessing probably by sometime midweek as to where, where we're going from there.
Absolutely. I appreciate the opportunity.
Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well, I, just to let folks know that I don't suspect that the, we will be making a decision on this, obviously, until such time as we've had the opportunity, not only to go through all of the questions and answers and that sort of thing. And we will be prepared for probably a, a public discussion of our decision-making probably within a week to ten days, I would say. We have some, obviously some things we have to check out for people's, you know, references and that sort of thing. So I'm guessing that's the plan.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Do we have potentially an item for Monday night for discussion?
Well, not, we don't have any discuss, any discussion we have, we will do will be an open session.
Right, for, for our slugboard meeting on Monday, I don't know if we had a item for that, if that would be.
We haven't, we haven't put.
Or if that would be too short of a notice.
Well, it's kind of short notice, but I, we didn't put that on the agenda. I mean, not that we couldn't put that on the agenda, but we have some other significant agenda items relative to personnel that we need to deal with. So lots, lots of things to think about. Any other questions or is anything for, entertain a motion to adjourn?
All right, I would move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion made, seconded to adjourn, those in favor?
All right.
Thank you so much. Thank you for taking the time to be here. Appreciate it.